Alright everyone, I'm Jared Zager. I'm proud to be one of your selectmen and I can't wait to answer any of these questions that you have.
Good afternoon students, my name is Carlos Lopes. I'm also one of your town's selectmen and I am very happy to be here at FES. Looking forward, yep, that's Gemini, he said hello. Gemini, wanna say hi? No? Alright, sounds like you guys have some questions. Is there an order? Alright.
So, on a daily basis, what do you do from day to day?
So, I heard, on a daily basis, what do we do day to day? Alright. Want me to start it off?
Sure.
Alright, so day to day, we actually have regular lives, right? We put our kids on the buses or get lunches ready, we go to work. And then, there are days that we have to work with the town on different matters. Whether it's someone contacting us, or someone like yourself coming up to us asking a question. We do a lot of research, we ask our administrators and their executive assistants. Working as a team, make sure that we're doing everything we can for the town. What do you think Jared?
So yeah, so we kinda go, piggyback off of what he said is we all, you know, still live our daily lives. And about, usually if you average it out, about every two weeks, we have a meeting. And that's where we do a lot of stuff because we can't, we can't be at town hall all the time answering questions. We can't all be together at the same time, so we plan meetings. And that's where a lot of the decisions are made. So, it's not always, but it's usually about every two weeks. Great question.
What can I do as a third grader to help my town?
Great question, what can you do as a third grader that can help your town? That could be anything. Gosh, what are you passionate about? I would ask, what's your favorite things to do? I know a couple of weeks ago, we had Earth Day, alright? That helps clean up our town, so a lot of students, your height, your size, and look just like you, right? So, that's one way to help the town. You can talk to your teachers and see if there's any projects that you can be involved in with the town. What else can you do? Ask moms and dads to help out as well, or your grandparents, or your guardians, loved ones. We're always looking for some good ideas, right? I know some of you also drew the parade competition, right? See who comes in first place, right? So, you guys do a lot for our town. We get a lot of feedback from yourselves and your parents. On what's going on within FES and the whole district. There's a lot of things.
In my eyes, it's be involved, right? Selectman Lopes has just talked about different things, different activities. Whether it's things that you're passionate about, sports, cleaning up the town, planting a tree, doing something that makes the community better. It all depends on what you really find passionate and running with that.
What inspired you to be a selectman?
The hard-hitting questions.
Yes, alright, so we'll change it up, I'll go first this time. So, believe it or not, is my, A, it's two. It's my love for the town. I've grown up in this town my whole life and I love this town. And then recently, well, somewhat recently, my daughter was trying to go to a school and for different reasons was unable to. So, I got upset about it and was complaining and I said that I was going to do something about it rather than sit back and watch stuff unfold. I ended up learning a lot from it, but I've always taught my kids to be part of the solution, don't be part of the problem, right? So if you have an issue, try and fix the issue. So, that was my way of trying to fix the issue was running for this position.
So, I wanna say a lot of the same things he said, but when it comes down to this is when you got here, Mr. Ward asked you, or talked to you and told you guys, you guys all did your research, you were looking at different things in town to make sure you knew what was going on in town, but also ask questions, right? So, when I was looking at becoming a selectman, I did the same thing. I went to some meetings, I watched some meetings on YouTube, I did the research, and then I realized if I want a voice, I gotta stand up and take that voice, right? And take action. So instead of just sitting down and saying things, one way or the other, I decided to get on the team and make sure that my opinion, your opinion, when you're speaking with your parents and yourselves here as well, make sure that you had a voice. So, that's why I decided to be a selectman. I was gonna be the nosey, in-your-face guy. Not so much, but I think I'm doing okay. So, that's why I decided to be a selectman. Great question.
How do you come up with the budget for the town?
Alright, so each department head actually comes up with their budgets and we, so we have a town administrator, that's where, you know, our office is. And what happens is, we kinda set some guidelines for them. Because it's really about the amount of money we have and are available, have available to spend, right? We don't wanna spend every penny we make, but we don't wanna hold on to too much and not be able to move things forward. So, each department head comes to us, well really to town administrator first, they kinda review everything. And then after that, it comes in front of us where we can, and the finance committee, obviously a huge part of it. And then we kind of approve or disagree with what they're really trying to come up with. So, it's all derived from each individual department.
Yeah, and if you think about it in your personal lives, if you do a chore or task, maybe mom or dad, or grandma, somebody gives you a dollar or some money for your work, right? You really want that piece of gum. But, if you save a little bit more, you may get a whole pack of gum, right? So as a town, we have to make sure that the money that does come in, we have to save it as much as possible in case something does happen, right? What if a hurricane or tornado shows up out of nowhere, right? We have to fix that, or a flood, or maybe a bridge, or... So we always have to make sure that we have that money for that big pack of gum, not just the one stick of gum. Who likes gum? I knew you would. Alright. Alright, Raleigh, I think you're up buddy.
How long can you be a selectman for?
Well, uh, we could be selecting for the rest of our lives, but, if you get voted in. So to become a selectman, it's for three years at a time. And every three years, you have to put your name out there and say, "Hey, I wanna run to be a selectman of our town." And then if you get enough votes, you stay as a selectman. There is no, I'm sure there's no limit how many times you could run, so in theory, I could be selecting while your entire school career, right? Or, I can say, "Next year, I've had enough, I've had enough fun." And the next person can step in and be a selectman. So as long as you can get voted in, we have no limits.
Perfectly said.
What can you do for animal shelters?
That's a good one.
Do for animal shelters? Yeah, so we actually don't have an animal shelter in town. We have the animal control officer. She handles all that stuff, but anything usually goes over to Lakeville where they do have an animal shelter. So we've kinda partnered with them. Because I don't know if there's a great enough need for one in town right now, what do you think? You think we need one? But yeah, no, it's at this point, we've never really thought much of it because we have a great relationship with Lakeville, just like we do with our schools. So, that's really where they all head.
That's right, yeah, no, I think your question is a great question. Animal shelters, I have an animal, alright? He sometimes likes to go for a walk on his own. And I'm lucky to have an animal control officer that knows my dog, and that's what she does here in our town. She knows a lot of your dogs, and pets, and peacocks, and a whole sorts of things that we have running around. And protecting them is very important to us. But like Selectman Zager said, we have a very good relationship, just like we do school and sports with Lakeville. And their animal control officer and shelter, they do a great job. Great question.
What is your favorite thing about your job?
There's a lot of good things, believe it or not. There's a lot of times people will talk about the bad, but there's also a lot of good. There's a lot of rewarding things that happen, and this sounds kinda corny to say, but this is one of them. I love this stuff, this is, when I think of being a selectman, I love things like this, working with the community. Recently, we did the Earth Day cleanup, right? And that was rewarding. That didn't have anything to do with being a selectman per se, but it was something where we were involved and you feel like you're making the community a better place. So, if I can make one more person in this group passionate about what we do, then mission accomplished. So, yeah, there's no one certain things, it's just the love of the community and making it a better place.
Yeah, no, I agree with you. I think one of the most favorite thing about the position is getting things done, right? You have a list of items to do, or you see an issue that needs to be addressed, and we get together like you guys do during like classroom, you huddle up, you learn new things, you make the best decision for yourself and for the town. And for us, we, as you can imagine, we have a lot of homework that we have to take home as well. To make sure we're prepared for every single meeting that we go to, so that when we do make the decisions, we're doing the right thing for the right reasons, right? So, getting a list together and then checking off that list. We have a lot of hard-working employees in town, very good people that work for us, work in our town because they love our town, like you love our schools. So, seeing that done is, fills my heart, so that's one of my favorites.
Good question.
How do you plan town meetings?
Town meetings? Alright.
So, town meetings are really planned, once again, by our office. So everything, there's certain dates that are required. Then there's different reasons of, you know, different questions that come up, and it can spawn from all sorts of different reasons. It could be something we know that needs to go to the townspeople. Not everything that the three of us can vote on, there's certain times where it needs to be voted on by the townspeople. So something like that has to go to them. Including what we had just answered not too long ago, right? So we can come up with a budget, we can approve a budget. But inevitably, it's the townspeople who have to make the final say that they approve the budget. So, there can also be, people get enough signatures, right? They wanna say, in the town of Free Town, we wanna make everyone call the color blue purple. And if they get enough signatures, it has to come up to the town for vote. So, that's another interesting thing. So we get usually, you know, a couple of questions that come up that someone in town actually got put on the ballot. It wasn't through us or anyone in town hall.
Yeah, a lot of homework, alright? I think to cap, to piggyback off of Selectman Zager, is there's a lot of work that goes in the background. We have to make sure we talk to as many people as possible. So we look at everything from sending things in the mail, emails, Free Town Flash, gosh, social media, the bulletin boards, and just making sure that, one, everyone knows what date, the time and date, when it starts. Then two, making sure that they know the information that we're gonna put out there, what we're gonna discuss. And for us, we don't decide, like he was saying, we don't decide what gets voted on, right? You do. So you, you as the voters, we represent you. So, there's maybe three of us, but we each represent a different district and part of town to make sure that we're speaking on your behalf, to making sure you're getting things done, seeing things get done. And town meeting is a great place to have a few hundred people having a discussion about everything. I think this year we have what, 26 articles? About 26 articles that we all have to discuss about, from money to trains to, FES actually, is one of our things to discuss this year. So, a lot of things go in the background. All is done by the administrative staff of the Selectmen's Office, as well as all different departments across town, from police, fire, and of course DPW, everybody. We all get involved, to include the schools as well. We need to know what you need and get and everything, so a lot of teamwork. Most of the time, it's teamwork.
What are the top projects and/or priorities for our town? And how do they impact our community, including our school?
Can you say that again? I didn't catch the first half.
What are the top projects and/or priorities for our town? And how do they impact our community, including our school?
Okay, so here's a couple of good ones. Right now, they're gonna be, you're gonna start seeing hopefully soon, some work being done on our fire station that's around the corner. That fire station is very small, so the boys and girls actually have to share the same room when they sleep. So, that's no good. So, we're gonna add on to it, and they'll be able to sleep in their own separate rooms. They'll actually have some room to be able to have meetings, as well as having a couple extra bays where they can put some equipment. Because right now, we have three different fire stations, and certain equipment has to be staged at other places because they only have so much space there. But that's the one station where everyone's at. So, they, it'll make the response time for a lot of things much better when the equipment's with them. So that's one of the things. Selectman Lopes, something else?
Oh, gosh, there's a lot of projects, a lot of fun ones, let's see. So fire station, we like fire trucks, so it's always a big one. We're also gonna be putting fiber optics throughout town, right? So that you can have fiber, faster internet, we're doing that. Looking at fixing a few bridges, so a couple of bridges here in town, one on Chase Road, one on North Main Street. What else is coming along? There is a train in the works, that's gonna be, it has a station here, so we have to make sure we keep an eye on the trains. Housing that goes with it as well, so that does impact our schools potentially in town. So, as you can see, there's a lot of things that are going on, to include the four corners. We're thinking about, hey, maybe it's time to change the traffic pattern, if that's a good idea. So, there's always something that changes what our day-to-day tasking is, but our number one priority is making sure that Free Town, people that live in Free Town, know that we're working on their behalf. And I can honestly say we are. We're working hard to make sure that we get everything we need versus everything we want. And that's a very important distinction, so, great question. What do you got Gavin?
What are the plans for the old Dunkin' Donuts in East Free Town near the Rotary?
So, at this point, we don't know. Stuff doesn't, you know, there's someone who owns the property. So, someone, they either need to sell it or lease it, and then it might come, it should come before us to make a decision on, based on what goes there. So at this point, we can't speak of anything that's happened. Because even if you hear, okay, you know, they're gonna open this, it's, until it actually happens, it's tough for us to say, so... What do you think should be there?
That's my question, what do you think Gavin, what do you think should be there? Another food place?
Yeah. Maybe something different for food, but food, yeah.
I like it, that's something that we have changed. There's a couple of new restaurants they haven't opened up since, you know, we've been on the board. One is The Ledge, one's The Tavern, not to mention Poke Soul, a couple of new, different restaurants. So, the variety has changed. Yeah, I don't think we'd be opposed for another restaurant in town, right? So, not a bad idea.
As a selectman, how much time do you get to spend with your family?
That's a tough one. That's probably the hardest part about the job, right? So I made a promise to my family years ago that being a selectman wasn't gonna take time away from doing everything that I like to do with my family. So, for instance, I like to coach, right? I can see a lot of faces, I've coached you this year, or I currently coach you, or I have coached you, right? I also do, I come to FES, right? I've come here for years, reading to you, to the third grade, second grade, first grade, kindergarten, everybody, right? So, but spending time with my kids, I have four boys and my wife. So, that's hardest time to do everything, because you have to try to work your regular work week, you have 40 to 50 hours a regular week. Then sometimes, some weeks are busier than others in town. So a lot more phone calls, emails, meetings, and then of course, sports, right? And then school activities. So trying to find that balance, and it's called work-life balance. If you guys can figure that out for us, please let us know, alright? We're still trying to figure that one out. So we do the best we can to make sure we give enough of each other and make sure that it has enough of us in that project or conversation to make it worthwhile, because that is important.
Absolutely, Selectman Lopes said it perfectly. It's all about balance. Sometimes, there's days, knock on wood, where almost nothing happens. And then there's other days where you feel like you can't catch up. And it's just about setting the time apart, so that when I'm home with my family, I have two girls and a wife, and I try to make sure that I set time aside for them and not just paying attention to my phone or my computer for work, the town. And paying attention to them, so... Good question.
How did you get elected to be a selectman?
Alright, so any position that's within town, you need to get signatures first, right? So I have to go to your parents and different people in town who are registered voters. And once you get 40 signatures of people who are registered to vote and live in town, then your name can get put on the ballot. Then, the fun begins. Then you have to, you go out and talk to people and tell them why you wanna run for this position. And you do different things, it's say stuff online, it's putting signs out in people's yards, going to events, just talking to people, you know, and some of the people are your friends already and they're gonna vote for you. But, it's really getting people to understand why you're running and what you can do to make the place better.
Yeah, exactly what he said. Hard work pays off, right? I think I told probably every one of you, hard work pays off. You put in the hard work, you do the job, walking around, talking with people, making sure they know what you represent, right? And stay true to your word, right? And then they'll trust you, and if they trust you, they'll put your name on that vote, and that's how you get elected. So, that's a very important step, trust.
What is the hardest problem you have dealt with?
Hardest problem we have dealt with? Gosh, you know, some problems that come up before us, we can't discuss. So some problems that we have, we have to keep to what's called executive session. So only the top tier or the executive session of the government, which is the Board of Selectmen, are allowed to talk about it or discuss it. So we have those problems. But then it's sometimes the easy things that you think are gonna come before you, that's gonna be a simple solution. And as you talk it out, it gets harder and harder because you realize there's more complexities involved in those problems. Do I remember any specific problem? No, they're all the same, they're all hard. Nothing's easy to be a selectman, to be honest with you. You're not gonna make everybody happy. And you try not to vote that way, you try to look at all the facts, right? Do you take some of the conversation, you know, part of the solution? Yes, is it the solution? No. And then you do your best, make the best judgment in each single instance, right? I think that, yeah, that's a hard, that's a very hard question, great question, but that's a hard one.
It's, yes, there's no cut and dry answer. And I can tell you that we all are human, right? And I can tell you that some of the hardest ones you have to do is if someone's in front of you that you know. Making a decision, but at the end of the day, you make a decision that you feel is the right thing. What's gonna be the best for everyone. And as a person, I've always wanted to make everyone happy. And one thing I've learned from being in this position, I'm kinda going back and piggybacking off of what Selectman Lopes just said, is that you're never gonna make everyone happy. And that's tough, that's a tough pill to swallow. And I'm getting better at it with time, but it's still not easy. So that one is, it's a tough lesson to learn.
Yeah, you just gotta like trust in the homework that you did, right? All the things you read, the conversations you've had. You make a decision, the best one you can make, and then that's your decision. Now, do we get it wrong sometimes? Yes, and then we'll go back and correct it if it's wrong, right? If we feel as though it needs to be looked at again, or we didn't have all the information, we're the adults in the room, so we're able to go ahead and make mistakes and then correct them, and that's okay as well. So, but I think most of the time, it's decisions stay where they stay because decisions were made correctly. So, I'm sure some can point yes or no, saying we agree or disagree with it, and that's fine, that's part of the process. But you made the decision, that's the decision that needs to stay. That make sense? Yeah.
When is the new pickleball court gonna be done?
Pickleball, it's a growing sport, America loves it. So right now, we're going through all the process of the paperwork, the boring paperwork that the adults have to do for the pickleball court. But I believe we're looking at putting it in Hathaway Park, right? Where the old basketball court area was that was sunk down, full of water most of the time? We figured that'd be a good area to put the pickleball court there. What do you guys think? Good idea? Who's a pickleball player? Pickleball, I tried pickleball, that's a tough sport.
I've never played it, but I'm excited to watch people play, because I'm not gonna lie, I'm not gonna be the first one on that court.
Yeah, once we know when it's gonna be finished, we'll make sure to let you guys know, alright? Alright. Good question.
What changes do you think we will see in the next five years?
What changes do we think we're gonna see in the next five years? Well, I know in five years from now, you're gonna be in eighth grade, right? Maybe ninth grade, some of you overachievers, right? The train's probably gonna be here permanently, right? Because we have a train station in town, right? We probably hear it and see it sometime, so that's probably gonna be a change. Knock on wood, hopefully we'll have two new bridges in five years, in different parts of town. Pickleball court, hopefully it's well-used by then. Other changes, gosh, that's a hard one, that's also a hard question because all the projects we talked about today, and maybe some ideas we haven't talked about yet, will come before us, that'll take place in whether it's more important than the other one, so... Gosh, I hope not too many changes, I like Free Town just the way it is, I will say that. But change is change, and we have to be okay with that as well, so... You know, there's potentially some things that people don't wanna talk about, like housing, that might be a thing by then, five years from now, maybe not, depends on how people vote. There's fun stuff, and not so much fun stuff that we can see happening in town that, kind of a hard question. But, the only thing we do know is this. Change will happen, and it'll be people like us sitting up here as your selectmen to help with that change, and help make sure the right decisions are made by providing you the information of the proposed changes, good or bad, whether you love them or hate them. A decision has to be made. So our job's to make sure you have the information so that you know how to vote, to let us know how to advocate on your behalf. So, again, we work essentially for you, we represent you, right? So, the changes you want is what, how will push us to make those changes, so...
Yeah, and I think to piggyback off a lot of what Selectman Lopes just said is, you know, change is going to happen, it's all about being smart with the change and the growth. But we don't know what we don't know at this point. So we can control things like a bridge, or the fire station, things like that, but there's certain things that are out of our control. So it's tough to say, okay, in five years, I'm gonna see this. We don't know. I'm gonna be a betting man and say that we'll probably see a few more houses, we'll probably see a few new businesses, things like that, but I don't have any specific thing that I could say, I think I'll see this. I'm hopeful that we see bridges and a fire station, well, that would be good.
What is your favorite thing about Free Town?
Free Town Foxes! That's a very long list, I love our town. It's one of the reasons why, and I'm pretty sure he's gonna tell you the same thing, he loves his town as well. So I know it's one of my reasons why I'm up here, right? Our town needs great people up here to make sure it's doing everything we can to be the best town in the world, right? And there are so many things I could add to the list of what I love about Free Town, alright? And it really comes down to my number one thing, is the people that live here. I love having you as neighbors and community members, alright? That is my number one thing I love about my town. I can call you Free Town Foxes for life. You are, you're a Free Town Foxes for life.
Go ahead, please. That was a good question.
How do you handle public speaking? Do you have any tips or tricks?
Alright, so as someone, Selectman Lopes is actually really good at public speaking. I tend to get a little bit more nervous, but I'm telling you, I'm getting better with it. And one of the things that I've done is try to stay confident in myself because like today, I didn't know all the questions that were gonna come up in front of me. But, I just try to stay confident in my responses because a lot of times, my initial response to someone is gonna be the most accurate one. So I try not to overthink it and be confident in my answer. And stay engaged with the person who's asked a question, right? Continue to keep eye contact with you as you ask that question, to let you know that I do care about what you're saying and listening to people, right? So that's, it's big to me, is always listening to people and then responding to them with the best answer possible.
So, uh, yes, everything he says, yes, absolutely yes. Um, and even though I, I, I can, I do well at times, public speaking, um, there are times that I'm, I'm nervous, right? I'm really nervous. And uh, I take a deep breath, I come in prepared, knowing all the facts I need to know, so that if I do get asked a question, right, um, I'm prepared for it. And then sometimes, I won't lie, I talk to myself in the mirror, right? As a little tip to myself, and I have a little conversation with myself to make sure that I'm prepared. Um, because even though I, I've done it a thousand times, every time is scary, every time, I won't lie to you. But I get through it, because I know that I'm prepared, and the hard work is paying off, and I, I make sure that I answer the question as much as possible. And like, as Stupin Zager said, eye contact. If you're talking up there, making sure you, you see everybody looking at you, you make sure you know you're looking at them as well. So that's my only tip for public speaking.
So if anyone sees Selectman Loeb driving down the road, talking to himself, now you know why.
True story.
I'm nervous about this one.
He's ready.
Was it hard running for selectman? What were your first ideas for the town?
It's still scary.
Yeah, it, it was. So I guess the good news, and we can all say this, our first time around, we didn't know what we didn't know. So you were kinda naive going into it, right?
Absolutely.
I was prepared, um, through certain avenues, right? With watching town meetings, being involved in the selectman meetings, showing up to different things, learning stuff. But um, I, I went into it thinking I knew certain things, and I learned real quick what I thought I knew, I didn't. Um, and then some other things I already didn't know and didn't think much about, so, um, yeah, it's, that.
Yeah.
I'm trying to think what else to say about it.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's a lot of, a lot of work, you know, you have to really, well, like I know for me, I talk to my wife, I talk to my loved ones and my friends to make sure that they're, because it's at the end, you're really doing it as a team, right? You, yes, we're the selectmen, but I also have a wife and children, right? So are they okay with their, my name being out there, something you have to decide on, right? Let's say we have to do something for the school, and one group likes that idea, the other group doesn't like that idea. So that's a lot of stress that we get. So I went to my family, make sure they're okay with any stress that they may receive, because I wanted to be sure I listened to them as well, not just me. Because I was gonna be, oh, yes, yes, yes. But if they told me, no, I don't wanna be part of this, right? That's something you have to consider as well, because your family is also involved one way or the other. So you have to make sure you do the right things, not just for you, for the town, but make sure you take care of your family as well. That's very important to all of us.
And, and becoming a public figure, it's just that you put yourself out in the public, so you, you kinda get noticed more. And so like my kids, a lot of times I'll go to the grocery store and I'll say, do you wanna come with me? No, I don't wanna, or you're gonna talk to everyone. So it does, it does change some things.
It's funny that you say that, because I had that same conversation, come on up. I had that same conversation with my wife and kids every time as well. We go somewhere, it's like, no, I don't wanna hang out with you, Dad, because I wanna be, I wanna lay low today. And sometimes it does happen. Imagine us going to the Lakeside Festival, how many of us would know us, right? So sometimes you want to come out and say hello, which is fine, and we want you to say hello. But you have to make sure that your family's aware of that as well.
Do you know when the commuter rail will be in use and will it go all the way to Boston?
So they haven't given us a, the date yet, have they? Because they keep pushing it back. So, um, we don't have a date. And will it go to Boston? Yes, but it's not a direct route. It doesn't leave Asona and go straight there. Uh, you have a lot of stops along the way, so it's, it's gonna take a little while to get there. And it goes out as far as Fall River from this side, from the Asona side of town, and then on the Free Town side. It goes out to New Bedford, but does not stop in Free Town, on the east side of town. So you'll just hear it passing through town, you won't see it actually stop.
Right. What you're hearing now is the, not the commuter, but the, uh, what's it?
Cargo trains.
Cargo trains going by, and that's what the noise you're hearing now. Once they do start, I think they're gonna start testing sometime this year, maybe later, because they keep delaying it because of different things. You'll start seeing it more speed, more, one of our projects, make sure we have railroad crossings and everything else in place prior to that. So that's why there's a delay in making sure it's happening. What's your question?
Did you go to school to be a selectman?
Did I go to school to be a selectman? No, I did not. Uh, well, I guess, I guess in a way, so I have a degree from Roger Williams University, a bachelor's in social science with the art of communication. Well, so what that means is, um, my, I did go to school for a lot of the stuff that we do as selectmen, but I was like public administration. But I did it to make sure that when I speak to people, I want to know how do we engage with them and get their full attention, and not just get their attention, but also get their input as well. So there's a way of doing that properly, and there's a way of not doing that properly. Because sometimes it's not what you say, it's how you deliver it, right? How you deliver that good or bad news, and that's really the most important part about the field I went into, because now I just buy stuff to build stuff for, for, for the Navy. So not really what I use it for.
And mine, a hundred percent, no. Um, I went to school and I have a degree in accounting and finance. So I tried it, and guess what? I didn't really like it too much. So I worked in the business world, and I, I stayed doing that. So I stayed passionate, but in what I went to school for was, um, didn't really, well, I mean, I suppose it helps when I'm trying, because I've always loved numbers. So when we're going over budgets and understanding budgets and why certain people are doing certain things, it makes it a lot easier for me.
Yeah. Anybody else? Oh? Awesome. You guys did a great job.
Yeah. Thank you. We appreciate it.
If you guys, you have any other questions, if, I'm sure you can raise your hand and ask, unless you have to go. What's your question? Have we done anything to help your school? Uh, we, well, we love FES, we, we do as much as we can for the schools. So one of the things that we're doing differently this year is we're creating, um, a fund just for FES, right? That we're putting at town meeting. That's so that we can just do FES projects, working with Mr. Ward and Mr. Goodwin, um, from the facilities. So that's one good thing we did for the school. We looked at your roof, we're thinking about putting solar on there, right? See if we can save some energy, right? So, um, always doing something, make sure your schools, we know that we, we love the school, but there are things that we wanna do, and we haven't done them yet, so we'll continue doing them. Ooh. You can pick one.
Alright. Um, I wanna get someone who hasn't asked. I'm gonna go with you, yes. Biggest responsibilities, um, it's, so really what we have to do is to make sure that we put our best foot forward to guide our town into the future, right? So we talk about a lot of things that have been problems and whatever, but really it's how do we identify problems before they even happen, and then move forward in fixing the problems. So, um, that's really our biggest thing.
Yeah. Listening, listening, listening. Homework, homework, homework. That's how we prepare for every decision we make, so. That's probably our hardest responsibility, is making sure we know what's going on, to make sure we make the best informed decision, instead of just, you know, going from the hip. Alright. All the way in the back, I see you with, yeah? Oh, gosh, uh, that's a great question. I believe it's something to do, from my memory, and I know the history buffs out there are gonna tell me I'm wrong. And I'm okay, and if I'm wrong, we'll correct it. But many years ago, when we first were founded, uh, we had a government that came over with, with the Mayflower and everything else. And that government created selectmen, governors, and everything else. So we're part of that, that process of having a local municipality, what's called the home rule, right? State constitution that allows towns like Free Town, uh, the ability to self-govern, right? So we become what's called the executive branch of government for Free Town, right? Just like the president is the executive branch of the federal government. So we're, we're not big enough to be a city to have a mayor and a city council, so in a, so the three of us become the mayor and the city council all at once, working with the boards and committees of our town. Think that's the correct answer. If not, I'll make sure to get more information on it. Great question, you got me.
I got you over there.
Um, what was it like when the first day when you, um, when you were selected?
So my first day was, um, I've never had so many emotions. In one day in my whole life, I was extremely excited and I was nervous. I didn't know what was gonna happen next. And funny story for me was, I actually had to go on to a meeting that first day. So I was elected one day, the next day I was sworn in, and then I had to go into a meeting that night. So thankfully, they reduced down the agenda for me, so I didn't have a lot to vote on. But yeah, I went right into it. And then shortly thereafter, I also went and met with some of the different departments around town and listened to what they said, so. Yeah, that, that first day was a whole lot of emotion.
You had it easy. So I was elected in my first meeting, sworn in the next day. My first meeting was an up, up, open public meeting regarding one of our businesses here in town, Excel. So, well, I was at the meeting and everyone was very, some were upset, others were, were there to listen to what was happening. And here I am, my first day, and it's coming in. You're just, and you really have little to say, because you haven't read everything on that subject. So my first day was really, oh, hi Carlos, welcome to public service. Alright.
Alright.
We have time for more questions? Couple more? Alright, there up, Mr. Zager.
You, right there in the red shirt.
Yeah.
Ooh. Well, I'm gonna say this, I haven't done anything. We, as a board, have done a lot. And a lot of it has to do with the projects that we've talked about, right? So there's a lot of things that are happening currently, or have hap, you know, gonna continue to happen, certain things that you haven't even seen yet, that we can't discuss yet, that will help the community down the road. Because as I stated before, it's really about how do we help the town move forward into the future. So we're always trying to stay two steps ahead and making the community a better place. So you really wanna just say, okay, at the end of the day, whether I'm here for three years, six years, or fifty years, that when I leave, that it's better than when I started.
Alright. Way in the back, yes, you. Are we the only selectmen? Is that your question?
Yeah.
So we are, so we're missing one selectman, um, Selectman Matthews. Uh, he's away today. So there's three of us that make up the, the select board for the town of Free Town. Uh, if you've probably been to Lakefield, they have five members now, so they make up five. So every town's a little bit different, between three and five. So, so it keeps it as an odd number in case there's a tie, to break the tie. So there's three of us. And it could be select women too, doesn't have to be a man. Anybody can be up here talking to you, to you, FES. Doesn't have to be a man or a woman. Alright.
Alright, you in the pink back there.
An external officer at the local export agency, Grace. But what is Free Town that's so, so different?
Um, it's something we have talked about recently. A, a survey came out from the chief of police that went to, you know, households, um, where questions like that were, were asked. Unfortunately, um, things always come down to funding and the availability. So it's something that we have talked about. Thankfully, Lakefield's been a great partner and put a police officer in, in schools that, you know, all of you will be at within, well, next year. So, um, you'll start seeing them there. So, you know, we, having a second officer in those schools would obviously always be very helpful, as well as having one here. We're very fortunate that we have a police station that's a couple hundred feet away from here. So some of those police officers come here and check in on you guys, right? So, um, it definitely something that's been thought about.
Yeah. So yeah, safety is definitely important to us, so discussions aren't being had, it's to see what we can and can't do. And, and part of discussion is, like, like Selectman Zager said, is we had a survey that went out, and it overwhelmingly, people said, hey, that'd be, let's look at that. So that's what we're doing. With that next phase, we asked the question, the information came in, and now we're gonna discuss a little bit further, how to make it happen, right? Weigh the pros and cons, right? Do all the homework first, then get an answer. Alright. You've been waving your hands all the way in the back. Yep. Yep, all, all the way in the back. So I've been selecting two and a half years now, running for reelection next year, alright? And I believe he's been selecting for four years now.
Yeah, so I was just reelected, so it was three and a half years. So I came in about a year before Selectman Loeb did.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, you in the tie dye, right there. Yep, yep.
Is it a lot of pressure when people vote for you?
Is it, is it a lot of pressure for voting? Sorry. Like to get people to vote for you? Yeah. Yeah, um, it's definitely something you think about, and it can weigh on you. I can tell you that this year, because I was running for reelection, I was a very nervous guy on Easter, because it was the day before election, so. It, it does, it's, you, you know, you care about something, so it's, it's tough. But that's okay, that's, that's part of it, because then, you know what, when I was reelected, it was extremely rewarding. So I told myself that it was all worth it, so, yeah.
Yeah, great question. Okay.
I'm sorry, all the people who didn't get to answer, ask their questions, but if you ever see us on the street, never stop to ask and ask us those questions, okay?
If you have questions, let your teachers know, we'll collect them and take it from there.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, FES. You guys are awesome. Hey, have fun next year, Grace.